All right, it's eight o'clock. I'd like to call the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We always have so much to be thanked for, the safety of our forces here, the police and fire, and all the businesses conducted here in these meetings. And we're enlightened of recent events, we are reminded of the statement we use every year, or every week, I should say, in this township, and that's the Brimfield Township. Lord has got to reach beyond the walls of this meeting room, Lord. We think of those that have recently lost their lives and tragedies, and those that our police and fire deal with on a daily basis, from struggling homes to sick people and elderly. Lord, we just pray that you just continue to help us to keep them in our prayers, Lord, in the ongoing needs they have. So, Lord, we do ask for your blessing upon this meeting today. Let everything that's done, I bring honor and glory to you, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, we'll start this morning with announcements and correspondences. We'll start with department heads. Any announcements or correspondences? Move to the board. Any announcements or correspondences?
I'm good.
I have one correspondence this morning. I had a conversation with Dave Seuss. He asked me to, he wasn't able to be here at the last meeting or today, so he sent an email and asked for it to be read in the record to the board. He goes, comments or response to the March 18th trustee meeting concerning the ADP implementation. One, timing of the implementation appears to be in the middle of the fiscal year, which means there will be two systems to reconcile at the year end. That implies that you will be adding issue resolution tasks for the new software to normal year-end business. Better planning might be appropriate. Two, is the time theft issue due to software or process? If it was processed, is that gap resolved? Three, best practices would assign a resource to focus on a project that has much downside potential as this, rather than have someone split their job responsibilities. Four, software vendor selection is driven by specific business requirements. To be clear, no software package will fit every situation. At the very minimum, the department head should document their individual requirements in as much detail as possible prior to vendor software selection, so that if the implementation doesn't meet expectations, the trustees that supported the project will be able to demonstrate that the appropriate due diligence was performed by the township perspective. Chief Mosley was correct in attempting to slow down the selection process until more information was available. Unfortunately, folks didn't speak up, and as a result, a decision was made for the township using only one view of the facts. I would encourage the decision-makers to review their approach to this software, discuss lessons learned from recent township projects, and make sure all of the right processes slash resources are in place at the beginning to make this successful for both the employees and the residents of the township. Dave Seuss. So that came in from him, because he was unable to attend the meeting. So I wanted to read that in the record.
Can I have that letter?
Okay.
I have an announcement.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, good morning. I just want to have a reminder here. I move, I move my stuff in my house slow, so it could be 20 years and I wouldn't look at it. So, what we're doing on May the 17th, at the Lions Club, or the Lions Park down there, we are having a Sue Fields cleanup. We've done this for the last four years, I believe. And we have some big dumpsters coming in. We have one for trash, and then we have one for metal. Now, the gentleman that has the recycle bin, he is donating the bin, and I really want this bin to be full, because we want enough to go in the bin to pay for what he would normally charge somebody to have a big dumpster set out there. But I wanted to give you enough ahead of time, when you start going through your stuff, that you can kind of get rid of stuff that you don't use anymore, and help the township. Thank you.
What day is that, Sue, again?
What day is that, Sue?
May, May the 17th, from 10:00 to 2:00.
And Nick, can I have that letter for the final?
Yeah, I'll forward it to you.
Okay. Oh, I didn't know if you, I thought you had it.
Yeah, no, I just had it on.
Are you having free hot dogs?
Yes, I'm bringing my son.
All right. We have no meeting guests scheduled today. We will move into meeting minutes. We need to entertain a motion to sign and approve meeting minutes from 318-2025 public hearing and 318-2025 regular meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the, we're gonna divide these up?
Yep.
We approve 318-2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Hey, and then I'll make a motion that we approve the 318-2025 regular meeting minutes.
But you need to do the public.
Second.
Hold on.
Oh.
You said the regular one, first time.
So Nick, I do the public one?
Oh, in public hearing.
So just say public.
The public hearing.
Seven.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll now entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So for discussion, is there any additions or changes to the agenda that we need to make? All right, roll call.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now entertain a motion to accept the purchase orders as presented.
I will make a motion, you accept the purchase orders, I've reviewed them and signed them.
Second.
Roll call.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue? Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll now entertain a motion to accept the warrants as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We'll now move into our public comment section. As a reminder to our attendees, there is a three-minute limit per person. We thank you in advance for being here today. In order to speak, we ask that you sign up on the public comment signup sheet. This morning, we have no one signed up to speak.
Darn.
So then we'll move into safety concerns. Are there any safety concerns the board should be made aware of this morning?
I've gotten a couple of comments from residents, and they're pleased with the road department and appreciate all the potholes that they have filled in the last few weeks. And I just wanted to make mention to Dave that we really appreciate his crew.
All right. Appreciate that. Anything else? All right. Nothing else, we'll move into our business portion of our meeting. We'll start with the police department. Roy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Just a couple of items for the board this morning. One item on our old business, just want to give the board an update on the status of our new officer hire. We will be extending a conditional of employment to a candidate this week. So, pending receipt of that, I'll be following back up with a few remaining phases of the hiring process, and then presuming no issues of those, I'll be bringing a candidate forward to the board for approval. So, that process is moving along with the candidates. Want to give you an update on that piece. Couple of items on our new business, just under updates, just requesting a records commission meeting at some point in the near future. We've made a couple of minor adjustments to our RC2 schedule, so if we can get a records commission meeting scheduled, I can get that RC2 sent down and approved, and we can proceed with the disposal. We have some records we need to get, to get out of our records room, getting a little bit full back there. So, one other item under board approval, there's a couple of grants that we received. I need board approval to accept a Walmart community grant payable to the Brimfield Township Police Department in the amount of $5,000.
I would like to make a motion to accept the Walmart community grant in the amount of $5,000 payable to the Brimfield Police Department.
I will second that.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And I also need board approval to accept the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services Bodymore Camera Grant payable to the Brimfield Township Police Department in the amount of $33,260.20.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services Bodymore Camera Grant payable to Brimfield Police Department in the amount of $33,260.20.
Okay, I'll second that.
For discussion, is that going to cover the cost of the body cams, or is that a little...
Just about the whole thing. I think Cap, we had a little bit left over on that, but that's going to cover the bulk of that project, just about.
Hey, Roy, who put the, okay.
Okay.
Who put this grant together?
Captain Acketts.
You are a fine, fine man.
Yeah, they handed out, they handed out quite a number of grants for departments across Ohio. They just made the most recent round, just got announced, and we were part of that most recent round. So lots of departments are getting some funding for that.
Is this going to update everybody's body cams?
This is, yeah. We have existing body cameras, but those are first-generation body cams. So these are going to upgrade to the newest generation of those body cams, going to have a much longer battery life as well, and some other features built with the new platform. So, yeah, it's an upgrade of existing technology.
Roy, you and your staff, I'm really grateful that they aggressively go after these grants.
Those, every dollar we get helps, for sure, because we were having conversations about what if, you know, if we don't get this, how do we do this, and kind of looking down the road, and it was, it was good news.
The residency didn't understand that you guys are doing this, and in the long run, you're saving them tax dollars.
Sure.
And while keeping the officers safe, safer. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That's all I have for you this morning.
All right. Is there any questions or comments for the police department this morning?
Under the updates, they requested a records commission meeting.
Yep, so they're just making note to the commission.
They're just giving this note, okay.
Yeah, just notice to the commission.
What is with all these trucks flipping over?
I don't know an answer for that.
That's crazy.
Kept our staff pretty busy yesterday morning. Everybody was tied up on that.
Yeah, my daughter was late to work. She couldn't get on to 18.
I think lots of people were late.
I think that was just her excuse, but.
She saw the news flash.
I think she was busy on TikTok. Okay.
All right, hearing nothing else for the police department, we'll move into the fire department. Craig, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Under old business, we'd like to just have a discussion with the board. A few months back, when we moved into the fire station side, we talked about a request to put up a chain barrier between the plaza from the back coming into the current parking lot. I just wanted to bring that up for discussion again. We had an instance yesterday where Joe can bring up a video of trucks that are coming through all the time. Now, this in particular was because of the backup on 76, but we're still getting the cut-through constantly, that just coming up through the plaza and going through. If you look outside right now, you'll see that the blacktop is completely trashed with tire marks from this truck coming right now. But I just wanted to have the discussion on the floor again about having that temporary, well, not temporary, a permanent chain barrier to block that traffic.
So this will be the first of two trucks that comes through. I've watched this video. So one of the concerns is the semis coming in there. You can see the damage that's done. But at one point, you'll see, as this video continues, traffic's going to back up, and I believe we keep all the squads on the backside of the building.
We do.
And so that would have caused an egress issue if you get squads out if we had an emergency call.
Well, you want to make a motion in the positives or...
Yeah. So I'll make a motion in the positives while you continue to watch this. I'd like to make a motion to put up a breakaway chain across the back entrance between the township property and the car wash.
I'll second that.
So you can see now, here's, the traffic starts pulling in, and I get there was an accident.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yeah, we had a second traffic crash yesterday morning, right there near the, at Circle K, so obviously that's what drove that traffic coming through there.
Oh, it's a steady stream.
Yeah, and at one point, they were tied up on both sides of the building, and it's pretty, it's pretty common. My office is on this side. There are people who are cutting through here and just flying through this parking lot. So we asked for this last time. You guys said no, but we really need this chain. We've been here for a few months now, and although it's not going to completely eliminate people from cutting through the parking lot.
It'll slow it down.
It'll absolutely slow it down, because a lot of people cut through this plaza and then use that way. So it would definitely help to cut down the amount of traffic coming through here.
Wouldn't it be better to put up a gate?
Well, the thought was to put two four-by-fours pillars or posts in the ground, and then running a chain across that says emergency vehicles only, so that it could be quickly disconnected.
But if you had a gate, all you have to do is unlatch it and swing it back.
Yeah, just be more cost to it, but I mean.
I mean, the people would definitely see it before they turn in. Sometimes those gates are, the chains are hard to see, you know.
Yeah. And this is what we thought about handing a sign from, to a larger sign that says emergency vehicles only. The big piece was, we didn't want to close it off completely. We still want to be able to get emergency vehicles out, or to allow traffic to flow through when we have the senior luncheon or whatever.
Yeah, well, most of the people cutting through aren't going to get out and unlatch the gate, you know, they're.
Right.
Yeah, I think we need to do something one way or another, just to stop it.
Do we want to just go with the chains? Do we want to go with the gate? Dave, what's your thought? Because you might be installing it.
I would go with the breakaway chain, because just in case things are backed up, say the fire department does have to go out, say they, somebody does run into it, it just pops a chain, instead of bending the gate and then you're putting up a new gate. So, I'm not saying fire trucks hit it, but you know, somebody comes buzzing through like that, they hit the, hit a gate while you're replacing a gate. So, it's just however you want to, which way you want to stop it.
I guess, I guess my recommendation would be that we just approve the installation and leave it up to, to Dave and Craig and Holly to work together to whatever they think would fit best for that situation. But I think we really do need to close that off after this event.
Yep.
So do I need to make that request?
No, I have the motion, the motion's on the floor for discussion.
I second it.
You ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, roll call.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick? Yes.
Motion passed. Nick, can you, or Craig, can you get the cost and all that, just?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll work with Dave. I think that would be something he would know. I don't think it's going to be very costly.
I mean, that's Dave's, you know, whatever he wants.
I don't, I just, I just want to get the, whatever the cost is. I just need to write it here.
John, the answer is yes. We'll work on the cost.
All right.
Okay, and then on, on new business, we are on pace to be 200 to 250 calls ahead of last year. That will go into what we've already approved with the entry-level firefighters coming in. The deadline is April 18th. I have 10 applications currently turned in. We have a rider today. We've had people coming in and riding. So it's been good so far. And then we're just still preparing for the senior luncheon on April 30th, and that mailers are, mailers are sent out to the seniors, and good response so far. And that's all I have.
No responses, is that what you said?
No, good response.
Okay. Are you taking reservations?
No, we didn't do it that way this year. We kind of know what we get, so we're just preparing for the normal.
And Craig, you're doing tours, right?
Uh, that is the plan.
And then Holly, are you going to set up tours for the Hatman Building too, same thing?
Um, I, if you would like me to. I have not been asked to.
I think that's a good idea. Since they're all going to be here, they're all curious.
Yeah, it's probably a building, isn't it?
They are curious. Right, they want to see the room, and they want to see all that.
I'm just thinking like, what's that to bring up this way, because there's no like country up.
Well, they could, yeah, they could, they could come in that door or this door and exit one of those doors, just kind of make the loop.
Not to use this entrance.
Right.
Yeah.
Or we can take the chain down, so we good. And that's all I had in this. If there's any questions. Thank you.
No comments? Okay. We'll move into administration. Holly, the floor is yours.
Um, no old business for new business. We have been having meetings with Kent and Talmage Chambers of Commerce to discuss partnership opportunities. So, there's been a lot of discussion recently just about a gap, because we don't have a current chamber. And we've heard it both from our businesses, and it's been internal conversations. So between Mike Lad, myself, Sue, Mike Ostenski was involved in an initial meeting as well. We sat down and talked with both chambers about how can we ensure that we are involved in the chambers, that we're partnership with them. We'd like to see, you know, that they have meetings in Brimfield, not all just in Kent or Talmage. We'd like to be involved in, again, just partnership and recognition, and really working with them, because we have a lack of a chamber. So we had a good meeting yesterday with both chambers, and they were going to get together and figure out a plan of how to really create this partnership. So we've talked to them about even just including, for example, the Kent Chamber. We requested that, you know, giving some, putting Brimfield in the name, Kent, Kent Chamber, supporting Brimfield and surrounding areas. So, we're working on how we can help and work with those two chambers. One, to support our local businesses, provide them resources and everything great that goes with the chamber, but also be a part of that, because we, we don't have one. So, I thought it was a very good discussion yesterday. They're going to, as I mentioned, they're going to sit down and brainstorm and figure out how to incorporate us into their materials, how to look at opportunities to hold meetings here and involve the township. And so we'll be getting back with them, and then I've asked them to come to a trustee meeting as well, and talk through the ideas that are generating from these discussions. So once we get a little further, we'll bring them to the board and have that discussion with you as well.
You know, just as one trustee, I mean, I know we don't have a motion on the floor. You know, I did talk to Mike Lad yesterday, and I've talked to other people. I just, and I know Nick has mentioned it one, you know, once before. I just, I don't want us to lose our identity. And I just, I mean, I know when they did the old chamber, you know, they all tried as hard as they could, but sometimes it just seemed like they turned into a dinner club. And, you know, I mean, I think a chamber to be vibrant needs to be, you know, lunchtime when business owners can, you know, all get together and stuff. I don't know, I just, I know as a board, we can't start a chamber, but we can sure, there's got to be somebody out there that would be interested in, interested in starting a chamber here in Brimfield. I mean, look at the, look at the difference of business back when we had it, Sue.
Yeah.
Way back when.
Yeah, we're 90s.
We are a vibrant, vibrant community now. And there's got to be somebody out there that would be interested in running the chamber.
Do we know, so the, the old Brimfield Chamber, it's completely defunct, there's no money in the economy?
Oh, yeah, there's money, there's money over their home savings, I think.
I, that's why I was asking, is there a way to revitalize that, to speed that process up, if somebody was going to want to start it up?
I think the last person that was in charge of the chamber was.
Yeah, Jeff.
Jeff Marshawn.
Yeah.
So he's probably still the account holder then?
No, I know they, I don't, I don't know what, what happened to it all, because I wasn't involved.
I asked Kirsten to look into that, the, how much we had left in the account and that information, so she's looking into it.
Okay. Does that mean it's interesting to see who the account holder was?
That wouldn't be our account, money, that would just be all set on us.
And I know, and I know we can't do anything as a board for the chamber, but we sure could be a focal point if there's somebody out there that would be interested to take it on.
Right.
And I'm sure I'd help, you'd help, Sue would help. I mean, we'd all help them get started. But, you know, like John, you know that. I mean, when you have a chamber, you got to be able, because you're going to pay dues, but you sure want to get something back out of that.
Right.
Well, as a business owner in town, I don't care about Brimfest. As a, as a chamber member, I don't care about their breakfasts. I don't care about any of that. I care about, what are you doing for my business to make money? That's, as a chamber, that's what they should do. That never got done before.
They weren't doing the marketing before.
Right, no, no, that's fine. It's all, it's all about the net.
They just never, you went to breakfast and nothing ever got done. It was just talking about how you're going to have.
Breakfast is always dinner.
Oh, they had it over there. But it was to figure out what we're doing with Brimfest, and that doesn't help me as a business owner.
You're looking for marketing avenues and support of the business.
Because I'm in other chambers, and I pay them a fee, and I get something out of it, but if I didn't, I wouldn't pay. So.
And these two chambers, just to let you know, so they have, both of them have new leads for the chambers, and just from my perspective, and they're doing some amazing things. And one of the things they're doing is encouraging participation in, in all chambers. So, you know, that was big discussion yesterday, is, you know, sometimes these companies come in and they're not sure whether to go to Kent or Talmage, and, you know, they had to get together and work out, again, working together partnerships. And so that's part of their thing too, is they're encouraging multiple participation in these chambers, because they're holding such good programs and networking and educational things, that these companies are seeing such a great outcome, that they want to, they want to join multiple chambers.
And I think for the board, our goal is to make sure that there's a chamber, or something as a source of information and marketing for our businesses, because we need to look out for our local businesses. And, you know, my concern has always been with Kent and Talmage Chambers, while they do a great job, is I don't want our businesses paying into something, and then it being focused just in Kent, and they're not getting the recognition. So that's what we have to look at.
And I mean, you know, Mike Lad has been so forceful in getting the new businesses to say they're in Brimfield, and there still are some that squeak through, and they say, well, welcome to the Kent so-and-so.
Right.
So now we're going to go ahead and have another, two other chambers, and welcome to the Kent Chamber, welcome to the Talmage Chamber. Nothing against those chambers, but we're still trying to, we need to fight for the identity of Brimfield, period.
Yeah, it's important that Brimfield's part of that.
One of my concerns, one of my concerns is, when you join a chamber, you have the business, you have these annual dues, and they can be quite expensive, especially when you're just a new business getting started. So if the businesses pay into the, the chamber, then when we as a township, like, we have our parks and recs, and a lot of people, they like to make donations to the township for events, are, are some of our businesses going to not be willing to, to share what they have to, and give it to the township in order, because they're saying, well, I, I pay these dues into this chamber. So, if, is the chamber going to give us that, is the chamber going to give us any money to do anything with in our, in our area? So.
I want Sue to add on to that. I just, I don't think the focus has to be on Brimfield Township at all. We shouldn't be the focus of them paying, the focus should be helping me, helping all the businesses in town make more money. That's what the chamber's supposed to do. It's not so that we can donate to the, the park programs or anything like that. It's to, it's to make our businesses thrive and hire people in this town and provide it. So, I would think that, that whatever we could do to help that chamber do that within our means, that's what needs to be done. It hasn't been here for 20 years.
Yeah. And I think we want to make sure those chambers are actively involved with our activities, so that they're promoting the businesses that way.
Sure.
Okay.
Hey, I mean, I can call Jeff later today if you want me to get the details of.
Sure.
What's going on. Maybe I can, I can at least find out what they have.
Sure.
Do we still have a bunch of their stuff in that garage? Did anyone ever clean it out?
There is still a bunch of stuff in the garage.
I thought we were going to get that all cleaned out.
The recycle cleanup is happening in May 17.
I think there's t-shirts, all sorts of stuff. They're probably micing them by now.
My bill saved one or two.
All right. The next is the April 30th trustee meeting will be canceled. It's not being rescheduled at this time. I've talked with the department heads. If we get closer and we need some items approved, we'll look at rescheduling at a later point in time. Looking for board approval, speaking of the records commission, I'm looking for approval to appoint the records, records commission members, Sue Fields, John Dalzell, Holly Woods, Roy Mosley, and Joe Jamison to that commission moving forward.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the records commission members of Sue Fields, John Dalzell, Holly Woods, Rowan Mosley, and Joe Jamison.
I'll second that.
Quick question on that, if you're, just a quick.
Yeah, now, now we can have discussion.
Just a quick clarification, where I know the, the statute says that records commission consists of the chairperson of the board of trustees and the fiscal officer. Are we okay to add other people to that as?
Oh, if it's got to be the chairman, maybe we need to, I don't know, Mark, you could jump in. Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, the statute's a statute. I mean, you can have other members certainly attend and provide any input.
So then the chairman, so we should really, instead of naming a person, let's name it chairman, and then John Dalzell, Holly Woods, Rowan Mosley, and Joe Jamison.
You, you need a representative from the Friday department?
I don't know if we per se need.
And I guess a second, I just a quick clarification again, is it may not be appropriate for me as a department to be a part of the records commission itself, because I would be bringing RC2s or RC3s, RC1s to get approved by the records commission.
Okay.
Maybe it might not be best that I actually am on the records commission as a department head.
It is probably okay for, for municipalities that typically will say like the finance director, um, is a member, and if there's never been an issue. And if the finance director is a member who presents an RC two, I suppose if you felt there were an issue, you would decide that was a temporary vote.
Got it.
Would we be better instead of appointing people, we just appoint job titles so as things fluctuate, you don't have to continually do that? Would that be acceptable?
That would be acceptable. You could say consistent with the vice vote.
Sometimes job titles change too. I mean, outside of your chiefs and fiscal officer, some of those other ones change.
IT director, fiscal officer, um, police, police chief, fire chief, um.
Well, this is, Nick, this is, you can change it anytime you want, so.
Okay.
I would, I'd specifically wanna have a name out there so we could identify who they were. But if three weeks from now you wanna change it again, we'll just change it and add somebody new or take somebody off. I would think that would work the best way.
I think the issue we'll run into though then is having Sue and I both in the room because then.
You have a meeting.
Comes a meeting and adds layers.
Were you, who's on it? It's me, Holly, Roy, Joe. And Sue.
But, but the revised code's calling for the chairman to be on that.
So then we need one of you or Sue to not be on it.
So it'd have to not be Sue, 'cause I'd have to as the chairman then.
Yep, and then next one, whoever the chairman is next year, they would take your spot.
Correct.
Okay. I'm all right with that.
So I'd like to amend the motion, um, to say Nick Koya, John Dalzell, Holly Woods, Roy Mosley, Joe Jameson. And then add the language consistent with Ohio Revised Code.
Now, am I on that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we can't both be there.
Sue. You. Nick made the motion, right? Mike, you second it?
So now it's a revised motion, I need a second on that revised motion.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion on the changes for the Records Commission?
Okay, I'm in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Sue? Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed. Sorry about that.
Next item, I'm looking for approval to allow publication of legal advertisements and public notices via the official township website and social media account. Um, this should be instead of the Record Courier. So, um, a part of House Bill three fifteen loosened up the requirements. And does allow the publication of those advertisements on our website and social media account. Um, so we would be doing Facebook and our township website. That website, um, that we have, Civic Plus, does retain all records. So if we for some reason needed to, um, provide a substantiation that we posted a different, a notice, let's say at any point in time. We can go into the website and pull that documentation for records purposes. Um, so looking for approval to change our process and use the posting for website and social media moving forward.
Before we make that motion, Holly, would we be better just in making it just the official township website? Meaning we, we could still post on social media, but for records retention, would that be easier for Joe to not have to maintain that records retention on both the website and social media?
I'd have to check when, the last, there's been two things I've seen, one of them, it required, it required both.
Okay.
Um.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the records retention on both of those, because now we got two different platforms to maintain that data.
Yeah, I, so I would have, and Mark, I don't know if you know, but I believe it required both. I don't know if that changed at any time. Okay, um, I have paperwork on my desk, but.
Joe, could you?
In, in support of the case that it's a research, um, Facebook does not have a record retention policy. Is there ability to provide anything? So if you're, if you have a part hiding, Facebook cannot be one of the factors that are outside of Facebook. Uh, if smart, just doing a social media editing, would that be specified at? It's not Facebook that, if that were taken out, Facebook may be able to smart, to social media. Because if I posted it on Facebook, it signs a label that's impossible to find anymore, that isn't there right. That's, I know that is an issue in other areas. Consider Facebook as a, a archive of information and what they find, it goes away. It's, it's not. Generally, that's what you do with Facebook.
So my, with, with that, to ensure that we capture it, we could just make it part of our process. That when we post it, we take a screenshot of the date and the page and the notice and just state, save it in our file. A screenshot of that in case anybody ever, I can just add that as part of the process.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're checking all those boxes that we don't end up in a legal piece with that in the future, based on a decision. Or did you have something on?
No.
Okay.
Any further votes?
Uh, we need a motion first, so I'll make a motion to change our official public notices to be now via the official township website and social media account. Instead of the Record Courier, in accordance with House Bill three fifteen.
And I will second that.
So now we'll no longer need to submit to the Record Courier, which will reduce costs for the township.
Correct, yep. All right, next item.
We need a vote first.
Oh, sorry.
I'm in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next item, approval needed to issue all non-union, uh, non-employment agreement employees in the administrative offices and police department. A three percent general wage increase effective four one, twenty twenty five.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second, oh, go ahead, Sue, second. Uh, John, so this was part of the financial plan for twenty twenty five, and you're good with three percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw the sheet here, I just wanna make sure you're still good with those numbers.
Yeah, that was all part of the budget out there. Three is what I would, that's the max I could do though.
Okay.
And Nick, you, or Sue seconded or Nick?
Uh, Sue did. Is there any other questions on the increases?
No.
I think this is our annual increase that we do every April, when we review for increase.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That's all I have.
Under administration, I'd just like to make a quick comment to, um, just to follow up from our meeting last week or two weeks ago. Um, police and fire did both meet with ADP, um, per the request of the board to look at the time tracking system. Uh, the initial meeting happened, there's gonna be subsequent meetings, so there's nothing major to report back to the board. But just to keep the board aware that we did, um, meet on that. Um, second, I just, uh, make the ward, or make the board aware too. Um, I reached out to Brim, uh, Portage County Township Association, um, to see whether townships are using UAN for payroll. Um, and they did some research on this, they're finding eleven townships that, eleven of the twelve that have responded back to the Township Association. Are using UAN for their payroll processing in, in Portage County. So it just kinda gives us some background information there too.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments under administration?
Do you, Nick, do you know which one didn't?
Uh, Ritz Town.
Okay.
Yep, twelve out of eighteen responded as of a week ago.
Okay, I was just curious which one didn't.
Yeah.
Okay. Into Ravenna Township.
She didn't list them for me, she's working on an email of it, the secretary, but she was trying to get all eighteen to respond.
Okay, 'cause those are the two biggest ones out there, I guess that we won't.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, we'll move into zoning and economic development.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Uh, permit fees, uh, year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, five twenty-two eighty. Uh, our old business updates, Woodland Reserve Condominium Development at five zero three six State Route forty-three continues site work. The roadway is now in and several homes are now permitted, and they'll be under construction here shortly going up. Um, and we're also, Mark and I are working on a TIF to run water down State Route forty-three. Right now, the money looks like it's gonna take it all the way down forty-three to maybe about a thousand feet shy of Howe Road. Um, Celebration Church purchased, uh, four-four-nine-four State Route forty-three, there'll be starting renovations this spring. Cleveland Clinic will continue renting its space there.
It's the one next to the Cleveland Clinic, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, they bought, they bought the whole building. Uh, Joe's Barbecue, uh, contractors started framing. And then I have a request for, uh, board approval, and Mark is here to elaborate on it. It's authorization to send statutory TIF notices to the schools, field, and Maplewood. And Mark, I don't know if you have to elaborate on anything?
Obviously, uh, the board's considered a couple of tips previously. Um, these tips that are, uh, both the ones that Mike mentioned, uh, for Wallen and for Dunkin' Donuts are, uh, most urgent. I would say due to the, um, level of completion of the facilities. The big thing is the township has to pass the resolution before there's a reasonable by the county. Um, but these are different than the previous ones the township's led. But basically, the township's gotta get a hundred percent of the TIF funds if it goes through. This is in a situation where the TIF dollars are necessary to complete the development in the first place. So the, uh, the actual resolution that we'll ultimately vote on is, you know, a little bit cleaner, a little bit simpler. It's certainly different than some of the prior tips that you would have. And then we'll probably have two or three more come down there.
So this authorization today is just to put the school on notice that we're gonna do it, and then we would have the actual resolution moving forward.
Statutory, there's a fourteen-day period, um, that we have to provide, uh, for the local schools as well as, um, the, um, the.
Will this have any negative impact on either this field or Maplewood financially with this TIF?
The way that I drafted them, it's no impact, no negative impact on the schools. They'll receive a hundred percent of the tax, and they'll receive otherwise.
Okay.
So no negative impact on the schools.
Okay, that's, that's just a big piece for me to make sure that schools are kept whole and they get the money they, they need. Um, have we outlined yet in that TIF agreement where we're gonna designate those dollars for those two projects?
Yeah, so Mr. Lad has given, um, some specifics, so we're including those specific projects, like any one of the things is the salt dollars, or just so that, uh, you. But in addition to those specifically identified uses, we also identify to the broadest possible range, uh, the permissible uses for those funds. It's allowed by the revised code.
Okay.
You'll have to, revised code authorization, and then you'll also have, again, this TIF after due, um, yet on. Or you, um, you have information right here, the eventual use of those TIF dollars.
Okay.
You'll have both.
Okay, and that'll be in that resolution, that'll come in fourteen days.
Yeah, it's in the activity of both resolutions, and it'll obviously contribute to the board, uh, after that.
Okay. Thanks. So do you need a motion for that then?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, send statutory TIF notices to the, both the field local schools and Maplewood for the Wallen Engineering and the Dunkin' Donuts projects.
I'll second that.
I'm all in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, new bu, business updates, Jerrit Fleet, uh, construction is now complete. They're planning an open house on April seventeenth between four and seven. Uh, and then we have sixteen new homes permitted so far this year, which is a, which is pretty, pretty good year, um, starting off with sixteen, so.
All right.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for zoning and economic development? Pretty, pretty good, yeah. Thank you for the report, um, we'll move into road department. Dave, floor is yours, sir.
All right, thanks, Nick. Uh, just let the board know, it's an old business, uh, we've been fixing potholes in some berm areas. Uh, we used about forty ton of the hot mix to fix all these areas up. Uh, actually, the hot mix is holding together way better than cold mix, so kinda like this a lot better. Uh, this'll be our last week with the hot box, 'cause I only rented it for a month. Uh, let's see, I lost track where I'm at. Oh, there we are. Uh, still working on the part-time, full-time employment position yet. We've had some more applications come in last week, uh, we're still working on that. Uh, some new business, we had the boom mower out, uh, cutting some brush and stuff back on some of the wooded areas. Uh, we're getting ready to start doing some ditching projects on a couple, in a couple areas. Uh, we've had a couple funerals in the last few weeks. Uh, we're working on the final details of the paving project for twenty twenty-five with the county. There's some things we're going through on a couple of the, the project, paving, not the chipping seal, but the projects of paving. Uh, just a couple FYIs. Uh, get ready, we're getting a lot of rain. There's gonna be a lot of rain this weekend, this whole week, plus there's probably gonna be some wind damage. Uh, just let people know, we are, I'm expecting flood. So backyards will get flooded, nothing I can do about your backyard being flooded, so we'll see what happens. And, uh, just a reminder, we're at seven forty-five, we have a bid opening at the next trustee meeting on four sixteen for the Chipping Seal project. And that concludes my report.
Dave, with the paving projects, are we anticipating a price increase again this year? Has the county talked numbers yet, or are we still too early in process?
Uh, what we're looking at with the paving project right now, it's, we're still trying to figure out what's our best avenue for this project we're working on. I don't wanna put it out there yet because, you know.
Right.
It, it could fall through because of the price.
That, that's what I was curious about, if we're gonna see a significant increase this year in paving costs?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be up there, yeah.
Okay.
So it, it's something we have to, it's a, it's a couple of things between a complete removal to different avenues of trying to fix the thing, the, the issue. So it's, it's just one of them that we're still trying to find the best avenue.
Okay. I appreciate it. Any other questions for road department today? All right, hearing that, we'll move into Parks and Recs. Cassie, floor is yours.
Good morning. Um, first thing I'd like to say is Hannah Michael is in the back of the room today, cross-training with Joe. Hi Hannah, you can't hide from us. So just in the event that, um, Joe is unable to run the meeting, Hannah is training to be able to do that, so thank you Hannah. Um, so old business updates, uh, we are working on the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April twelfth. Um, so far, we've received donations from Walmart, thank you Roy for sending Walmart our way for those donations. Um, the Dalzell Insurance Agency, Chase Bank, and Deval-Bentaine Insurance, so thank you to them for that. Um, we are well on our way working towards touch a truck on Saturday, June twenty-first. Um, we have fifteen vehicles registered so far, we have some new vehicles coming this year. Um, we're working on booking some costume characters, um, some inflatables, and some carnival games. And I did submit a request for a Metro Life Flight, um, helicopter landing. And then, um, new business items, um, the lake maintenance at Maguire Park. Every year, we've contracted with the lake doctors for lake maintenance at that park. Um, much like everything, the cost for that went up this year. Um, they quoted us at five thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, so we went back to the lake doctors and reduced, um, our costs by reducing the treatments from two treatments a month to one treatment a month. And we shortened the treatment period by two months. So instead of going from April through October, we'll be doing May through September. Um, so that brought the cost down to three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the year. And then upcoming programs, on April third, we have cheer yoga at ten AM at the community center. On April tenth, we have scrapbooking at the library at one PM. And then, of course, on April twelfth, we have our Easter egg hunt from ten to twelve-thirty PM at Town Center Fields.
How's that cheer yoga doing?
Very good, we have very full classes.
That's good.
Yep. Um, Holly, did you wanna touch on the next item, or would you like me to?
Um, okay.
Okay, um, the next item for board approval is, um, we are looking for approval to hold the Brimfield Township Trick or Treat. The Saturday before Halloween in perpetuity. I know usually we, um, decide on the date every year, so we're just looking for, um, having a consistent date for that.
So this came up, um, we get questions from HOAs pretty routinely every year, early on, because they're trying to plan their calendars. And, um, our typical, uh, standard date is the Saturday before Halloween. So the thought behind this is why not go ahead and just set it? And if we get into a position, a, a year where we might need to adjust it, then we just come back to the board and adjust it. Um, but by setting it, uh, the Saturday before Halloween moving forward allows people to create their schedules and not wait on us to set that date.
And that's usually, Nick, that's pretty much usually the same time they have the subdivisions have their little thing?
Yeah, most subdivisions try to do it the same time. Um, I know our subdivision does it just on Halloween, but we're the only one who does it Halloween night. So I think that, I mean, that works. We've always, the reason we've done it annually was to try to balance around Kent, but I don't think we need to do that anymore. I mean, I think it just makes it simpler, then we have a standard calendar, I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah.
That, for, I mean, everybody loves Trick or Treat, we get lots of questions about it all the time.
I think the parents love it more than the kids, 'cause.
It's a fun time in the driveway.
Yeah, when they have dri, driveway time.
Yep.
Well, that's good.
I wouldn't be opposed to do that, I think it's simple. And it moves us towards more of an annual calendar, where we can have a calendar out sooner for the year's events.
Sure.
I'll make the motion to hold Brimfield Township Trick or Treat the Saturday before Halloween moving forward.
And I will second that.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Do a big post on that so people know.
We'll do.
This could be great.
Are there any other questions for Parks and Recs today?
Let's get Maguire Park open.
Are we close? Are we close on Maguire Park, what's, what's next phases?
Um, the next phase, we're still waiting for Humbling to tear down those buildings, um, that's just been weather dependent. And I know they were finishing a project, so that's the next step.
Okay.
So does he give you any kind of estimate?
Um, I'll have to give him a call back, I called him a couple of weeks ago and I said they were finishing a job, so.
All right. All right, no other questions for Parks and Rec, we'll move into IT, we have no old or new business today, so we're good to go. All right, uh, we'll move into cemetery, um, Memorial Day celebration.
Okay, well, I just want to tell you, I did call the VFW and talk to Kevin, they're very active in the, all this stuff. Um, Nick, she echoed your comment completely. They said they would do it whether there's one or none. They just think it's, uh, something that's been part of the community and, and they just think we should do it. And, you know, I guess I think, I mean, I appreciate what the cemetery board said, but maybe last year was a fluke, I don't know. I think, I personally think we should probably do it.
It's, it's an honorary thing to me, right? It just, and, and I don't mind being there, I, I enjoy doing that event because it's, it's just personal, so.
Well, they said we probably would have done better if you weren't speaking, but.
Give me a microphone, I'll talk for a while.
I don't know, I just, I don't know, I think maybe we're doing this a little bit too early. You know, the.
At eight o'clock?
No, 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 I mean, canceling it up for a good, you know, I just think maybe give it another try and.
So we did some research, just to, just so I'd like to go over the research that was done and, and, and I want to take this back because it, um, the past few times this has come up, it, it's gotten very heated. And it, it's not that the cemetery committee is, is looking at as a way out of the ceremony, it's that it's just not working the way it is. So we contacted seven cemeteries, um, and out of the seven, out of the seven cemeteries, local cemeteries, uh, six had some sort of service at their cemetery for Memorial Day. All six of them had parades associated with the service, there was either a parade before or after, where all of them had either a veterans committee, an American Legion and/or VFW arrange and put on the service or cemetery, um, which helps lead to its success. So in talking with the cemetery sexton, this is something that she's tried to do annually, but most of those organizations are already tied to other cemeteries and helping them put on their events. So it, it's a matter of we're, we just have a, we have a lack of support because we're not part of a veterans committee, American Legion, a VFW. Um, and so that's why the cemetery committee did this, it wasn't just because last year the numbers have been dwindling, um, every year. And it's just a matter of, you know, are, are we doing the right thing, um, for an event or do we need to, to refocus? And if you guys want to do it another year and see where it's at, we'll take it back to the cemetery and committee and let them know. Um, but it is a matter of, you know, we don't have the support of all of these other entities like the rest of the cemeteries do, which I think, um, leads to a, a lighter attendance.
Yeah, Holly, you're right, because that's what Kim said, she said, most of them, you have a VFW or someone that's running them. So it's not, it's not actually the township that's running them, it's a, an organization and, and, and I just don't understand. Yeah, Brimfield is, we are one of the largest communities and how we don't get more support from outside people.
Wonder if we could coordinate with Subfield, because if it's tied to parades, I mean, that, that was the reason we changed the entire timing was to get people to the parade. Wonder if we could joint advertise this, right? Like, we're advertising, come to the ceremony and go to the parade, they're advertising, go to the ceremony and then come to our parade, so that more people.
Well, you got to eat the pancake, pancakes for, from the church, from the Boy Scouts.
We can go to the ceremony and then get pancakes.
Go to the ceremony and then the pancakes, then go to the parade.
That's, that's been my route every, every year.
I, I got a few comments I want to make about that, you know, there's always pros and cons to every issue. And we have a population, I would say, about fourteen thousand people in Brimfield. Last year, we had less than ten people other than those that were participating in the ceremony. And this is very near and dear to my heart, and I don't know where the patriotism has gone from the people. We've lost it from generation to generation. And I want all of you to know, and I know most of you already know, my husband, who is deceased, was in combat in the Second War and also the Korean War. And he was in the Korean War in nineteen fifty when it first started, his, he had frostbite from his feet to his knees. He was a hundred percent disabled by the VA as he got older. For ten years, I was a twenty-four, seven, round-the-clock nurse. And when I go through my experience and only less than ten people can show up for something to honor all of our veterans, it is just, it's just appalling to me that, that nobody cares. And this is why, uh, I was of the opinion that if you all don't want it, and this is our taxpayers' dollars that pays for that, sent for that, if you all don't want it, please let us know. If you do want it, get up early, come over there at eight o'clock, go eat the pancakes and go to the parade. So that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
I did have a call from, uh, I had a call from Dick Mezner, um, he wanted me to speak on that too. He was, uh, it was a forty-five minute conversation. He was very vocal about this event, um, making sure that we maintained it. Um, said he had heard about it while he was at McDonald's and was frustrated that we were going to be canceling or changing the event to something else other than the in-person, so he wanted me to pass that along from Dick Mezner.
I would encourage, encourage Dick to attend. It would be nice of him to show up and we would have more people.
I'm worried about talking, he, he loves to speak.
Oh, we should, I'll get ahold of him.
Well, the one thing on this list that we don't have is a parade, but we used to have a parade, it was a very, very small parade. Probably, what, ten, fifteen years ago, is that when it ended? Um, ever since then, it kind of, the process went away, but, um, we kind of matched up with everything Holly has on this list with the parade, but we don't have one now, but we used to. But we couldn't get field to participate, we couldn't get a lot of, so it kind of dwindled away, kind of like the Boy Scouts going away and all that kind of stuff, just as.
Well, at that time, we had the Rotary, we had the Chamber, we had the Lions Club, and that was all the activity of these people who were our residents. They're not there anymore.
Has the Boy Scouts reached out on this situ- on the Memorial Day for this year?
Yes, JND contacted them, they are available and we've got, we've gone ahead and booked them. Um, they did admit that they made the mistake last year, um, so they're, they're available, the choir's available. We went ahead and just coordinated everything with anticipation that this was going to continue.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
We don't, we're just going to continue as.
Okay.
So are we going to do it or are we not going to do it?
I mean, we can make, put into a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue the Memorial Day celebration, um, as done in previous years.
Yeah, I will second that. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, uh, any additional comments for, for cemetery? All right, hearing none, fiscal office, any updates, business?
No, uh-uh, well, we have some stuff going on, but it's, it's not official yet, so I'm going to just kind of wait.
All right. Uh, with that said, we have an executive session here. Uh, before we go into executive session, I'll open it up for the good of the order of Brimfield Township, uh, from the board and department heads. Anything for the good of Brimfield Township?
Well, I don't know if this is for the good, but, uh, there's, like I told Cassie and I told Holly. I really think this is a, a big time for the township with Maguire Park. It's going to be a centerpiece of our park system and how so many other entities, they get the backing of businesses behind parks. And I really think, and I talked to Holly, like I said, both of them, I think we need to search for bit, willing partners to help build this park. It's not just Brimfield, it's that whole Cascade plot, plaza area, everything. This is a benefit for every, everyone, so it's time that we can get some of these people, you know, to really get behind the park system and help us take it to the next level. So I just would like to see some business, businesses get behind this. My thoughts.
What are you thinking, like, just donations or are you going to? Like, we talked about you want to walk away before at one of the parks and sell them planks, I mean, what, what's your thought process?
I mean, whatever, you know, Cassie and Holly and Hannah come up with, but I mean, it's just such a, I mean, this park will be here for years and years. I mean, what a great, I mean, I.
That's forty acres.
It's, it's beautiful, so I really would like to, you know, you go into the Aquan Public Parks and all that stuff, it's all, so many businesses are behind it. I just can't understand why we don't get people behind it, is it the fact we're not out there looking or, I don't know. You know, I mean, sure, I'd love to take more tax, I don't want to take more tax dollars from our residents because, you know, I talked to a lot of the senior citizens and stuff, I mean, and things are tight out there, but, you know, for businesses, you know, I don't know, I'd just like to see the business community get behind this a little bit.
I'll be partnered with the Chamber.
Yeah. I think, I think Nick's starting it, I'm just putting that out there.
And we'll schedule some meetings, so, you know, part of it is figuring out, so the priorities, you know, that lake is a huge, um, asset for that park. Um, to me, there's, there'd be two priorities once we get funding, um, the, the lake, um, creating access with, uh, a, a dock with, you know, possibly adding a kayak launch or something there for people to use. And then two, some type of shelter, um, for picnic shelter parties, whatever it is. And then, I mean, there's other things we have ideas on too, that house, you know, I, that's a, a large investment. We're going to get funding to, to create whatever we want with that, whether it's a nature center or, um, something else. Um, but we have kind of a list of ideas that parks put together of, of priorities. So we just have to figure out how to get to these, not figure out, we have got to get out to these businesses and even just the residents to do some type of fundraising, uh, because I, as we all know, that park is going to be our premier park and everyone's going to want to be there. Um, and I think people will want to contribute and make it a, the best park, uh, so they can stay local.
Well, with the, the one thing I definitely think we need to touch base with our legal, just to make sure we're doing this the right way. So just, I mean, it's, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for some businesses to get involved in this. Wasn't it last year we had someone wanting to camp out there, was it the Boy Scouts that wanted to camp out there? Yeah, so. Okay, well, that was my thoughts.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other things for the good of the order? All right, hearing none, um, this date four to twenty twenty-five, trustee Nick can move, Nick Way moves to convene an executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G, for the purposes of considering the following manners, uh, the investigation of charges of complaints against a public employee, official licensee or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official licensee or regulated individual requests a public hearing. I need a second for that executive session.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are in executive session at nine oh one.
Walking on the high line Eyes on me, I'm automatic I'm tripping on the light wires Sound me alarmed, just to be dramatic I, I don't care what you say I, I'll do it anyway Anyway, I'll do it anyway Watch me do it anyway Do it, do it anyway Do it anyway Do it anyway I'll take this way too far I break the stars I'm kicking down the door Take, take the floor I don't care what you say I'll do it anyway I don't care what you say Watch me do it anyway I really don't care
Life too short to play it on speedrun Only get one, no option to rerun Where's Babylon going to hide or reach them? Down to earth, they grindin' with storms come Rap race only runnin' from Better say cheese but sand spread in the floods Livin' in the moment, I ain't worried about none I'm straight chillin' Back against the wall, too acquainted with the feeling Like I lost the ball, find a way if I'm willing Only fear God, not sweating his lost children Price on my head, exported a few trillion suicide missions whenever I'm feeling I'm built different, cruise with no ceiling Sun shining on me, boy, I meant different Go! Yeah, 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 yeah Come on, come on, come on, let's go! I don't know what comes next But I couldn't care less I refuse to feel stressed There's a fear in my chest Hear the bull from my stairs Walk away from the pain I've been through This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new This is the moment I break through I ain't really with that back for If you can keep the hustle homie, I can't bear it all Bullheaded, in the market like you asked for Then I saw you, bull the target like a matador Come on! I'm ready to go get it like a Labrador Dog days done and I'm tired of the tug of war Broke off the leash and I ain't going back no more I've been better ever after life, bear more Hold up, let me reset Livin' in the mainstream, use the sequence I cracked the code, popped out the subnet Walk around like I found a twenty, that's a death step Livin' in the moment, did you notice that ain't up yet? You can put the pressure on me, I ain't dropping one sweat Use the beat stress hard, beating like a drum set Breathe stress, let it go Everybody need a refresh, go! Yeah, 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 yeah Come on, come on, come on, let's go! I don't know what comes next But I couldn't care less I refuse to feel stressed There's a fear in my chest Hear the bull from my stairs Walk away from the pain I've been through This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new This is the moment I break through I don't know what comes next But I couldn't care less I refuse to feel stressed There's a fear in my chest Hear the bull from my stairs Walk away from the pain I've been through This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new This is the moment I break through
The session, uh, board is taking no action at this time. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
We are adjourned at ten nineteen. Thank you guys.
Good meeting.